Good evening. My name is Geraldine Dominic and I live at 9131 South Somerset Lane in Woodbridge, Illinois. You know, I'm concerned about the decibel levels and, you know, I hate to say that I totally disagree with Chris's assessment on our last, you know, round of sound abatement and providing sound walls, but my correspondence and my data and my file is totally different from what Chris presented. And we asked hard questions back then and they, those questions were never answered by this body. We were kind of given 100% or nothing. And we couldn't ask a question, we couldn't get results. But that's another story for another day. But they're talking about currently approximately 76 decibels for this project. Is that just for this project or did they take into consideration the decibel levels that are already exceeding what the EPA suggests is appropriate for the residents? The sound in our neighborhood, let me tell you about my house. If any of you would like to come to my home for dinner, you are all welcome. You will be treated wonderfully. My house vibrates. My windows vibrate. The noise levels, especially since that sound wall went up on South I-55, that kind of like turned around the noise back to us. And I guess according to what IDA says, it should never have happened in the first place, but they guess they treated us as though we didn't exist. So the sound wall went up there. But I have a little boy who has cirrhosis of the liver, Wilson's disease. Do you know, he doesn't sleep at night. I have to bring him into the master bedroom and basically I go into his bedroom. My daughter is up half the night because her wall vibrates. And I beg any of you to come over and spend the night. My home is very clean, well-kept. You would not be uncomfortable, but you would not be able to sleep because of the noise levels. Now you're asking us to entertain and have more noise levels. Where is this study? Where is the data? These homeowners have children. I have a 13-year-old boy who has health issues and gets chronic headaches because of lack of sleep. He can't sleep at night. He goes to school and he's falling asleep in school. He comes home from the hospital from having different procedures and stuff. He can't rest. I asked the hospital, keep him an extra day so he can get his health back together again and then come home. Because I know he can't sleep at home. My daughter, she's studying to be a nurse. She's up half the night, but when she finally crashes, as all of you probably went to college and you know how you cram for those tests and exams, and bless her heart, she's an A student, love her. But the fact of the matter is when she finally rests her head to go to sleep, she can't. She's vibrating. I invite you to come to my home. I would like you to see it. I would like you to experience it. It is awful. And then to invite more noise to this community, are we, you mean, are we for real? Then you also have Frontage Road. Now you're bringing more traffic closer to us. Maybe you're going to direct this semi-south, but what is going to happen along Frontage Road? Maybe a smaller type cargo? I don't know what you're allowing to go through there. But the fact of the matter is it's going to increase traffic along Frontage Road. And let me tell you, that is, you know, you guys should park your cars up there because I'll tell you, that's a great source of revenue. Okay? The cars just fly in there. And I'm sure a couple of times, I think I called the police department because a few of them, you know, came into the ditch. They like to fall into that ditch, especially in the wintertime. But the fact of the matter is you're bringing more noise to our community. Our homes are devalued now, number one, because of the economy. Number two, because of the noise. And it really is unbearable. I don't open up my windows in the back, I can't. I have to shout at my son. He's like, "Mom, why are you yelling at me?" I'm like, "No, Anthony, I'm not yelling at you. I just am trying to reach you because of all the noise." I can't even hear my son respond. God forbid a child was being kidnapped or something was, we couldn't hear him scream. Now you're saying bring more noise? I think that's wrong. And where is, if it's additional 76 decibels added on to what we already have, or how is that calculated? You know, to me, I would love to see development in our community. I'd like to see jobs. I'd like to see progress. That's a wonderful thing. But think of the people. If this $10 million that you guys are going to give them as a kickback or whatever, probably poor choice of words, but as a supplement, subsidy, whatever, take 2 or 3 million out of that and build a sound wall. Provide this community some safety too. Do we not count, I mean, we all stood and said the Pledge Allegiance. You know, and I was thinking to myself, this body has never really been concerned about us. And I still say, I differ with you. I'll sit with my notes next to your notes and I'm telling you, my notes and my emails say something totally different from what you recall from the sound wall, you know, fiasco. And that was a fiasco because that project should have went through and the residents should have been able to be provided for sound.
Okay, excuse me. In the interest of time and the purpose of hearing from residents, I think you should focus on Edward Don.
Well, that's what I'm saying. So if there's going to be more noise brought to our area.
In the interest of my hearing, I have to concern on what do we, you know, increase decibels of, yeah, I think every second, 36 or 70, or 80, or 90. And then what would it then be for someone, this is just, as about 100 for someone, this is just a guess, that's about 100.
It would be significantly reduced, but I don't have a specific number. It would be a significant additional question.
Okay. And then I, my question was also, where is the sound study? Is there one that's published someplace that we can get or do we have to do?
Is there one that's published someplace?
I mean, he spoke about a sound study, one of the gentleman here.
I mean, he spoke about the sound study, one of the gentleman here.
So I'd just like to know where that might be for us as residents.
I'd just like to know where that might be.
Referring to my analysis, it's based on, referring to my analysis, it's based on IDA standards.
But I had heard from one of the gentleman that there was an actual study.
But I had heard from one of the gentleman that there was an actual study.
And I'd just like to know where we could obtain a copy of that. Thank you.
Additional individuals from the back row? Yes, please proceed.
I just want to make one comment. Mike Gormley, 939 with them. My concern, I went to a planning commission meeting, we were told, you know, the night before. So we went and I just want to tell you, perception, that a lot of people walked away from that. It was a done deal. We came, we gave our voice, the chairman was very nice, said, "We're going to take your consideration." I left early and my wife came home and I said, "What happened?" She said, "5-0, done deal. That's it." And I remember Phil Rogers from Channel 5, he lives in our neighborhood, he was so irate. Said, "Won't they at least take it back and hear the discussion?" And the only comment I have a thing. The next day, I go to work about 5:00 in the morning, there's trucks getting ready to go. Now here's my question. If they took a risk in doing that, the pressure's on you guys. But if they're willing to do that, the perception is, it was a done deal. Now I know these guys, I don't believe it was, but that's the perception I'm walking away with. And that it's already a done deal because my wife asks you, "How many of you people have been out to the site? But yet you're going to vote today." Now it seems like they really took a risk. It reminds me of Mayor Daley going down to Megs Field at 3:00 in the morning. Because he took a risk too. And he said, "Well, the FAA, what are they going to do about it?" That's how I kind of feel about this. The pressure's on you because if you say no, and to me, a businessman want to be accountable, that's not a good risk. And my only concern is, if they're willing to do that, how can I trust them on everything else? Thank you.
And would like to see the voting here, would you please provide some information?
Uh, I have a comment on the gentleman connection, access. I'm sorry, my question. Access before approval is not unusual in many municipalities. It is absolutely a developer's risk. Security is provided so that if in fact it's not approved, the site will be restored to its condition immediately prior to it being disturbed. So why, I appreciate why you may think it's unusual, those boards don't feel any pressure. I mean, developer knows it's at his risk. It's not an uncommon occurrence in municipalities. I'm not suggesting it's every day, but it's not uncommon, especially as you're going into the wintertime. And the developer wouldn't even suggest that they do not have to put it back to its natural state if the project were not to be approved.
My name is Alisa Pedlicek. I live 9720 Woodham Lane. And this is my second language, so I study English myself. And maybe gonna sound a little bit funny, but I'm going to try the best to explain everything. I live exactly at the corner where is the Frontage Road and the building going to come. And when I been to find this house, I ask about everything. What going to be over here? What going to be another side? And I hear from Gallagher and Henry, the people who is working at the office, of course, they say, "This going to be the another subdivision, new one." And even I ask, "Oh, when this going to come? Because I prefer over there because it's a little bit higher." And the workers tell me, "You know what? Going to be better for you when you're going to invest now for your house. One day, because this going to take about 2, 3 years, always you can move over there, sell your house, even make the money." And I make the money. And so I choose bigger lot. I have vegetables, everything. Because I want this. I paid $28,000 for this lot. I ask about everything. Now what we have? It's lot more traffic at the I-55. I don't know that going to be like that. We don't know that 355 going to come over there. Now, end of the week. So we know that Woodward, it's very busy now. Was not like that at all. Very busy. End of the week, lot of people are working, going, everywhere. We can't talk at home. We can't have window open, not now. All the time for 5 years. Because we don't hear from the kitchen to area eating. We are talking, "What? No, because the water is running. I can't hear you." We are talking like that. We don't hear nothing. We bought the big lot because we want to enjoy with this. I'm working 16 hours every day. For nothing. Now we're going to face to the wall? We're going to have more traffic? We thought Sunday going to be better because it's not traffic, everybody almost at home. It's the same. The Expressway, I-55, it's very busy, more busy how was 2 years ago. So what we going to do? When I ask for taxes about this house, they told me this way. "You know what? You're going to have beautiful house for half a million dollar." So the tax is very expensive. It's $8,400. It is expensive. Where is the another area like that? What is the beautiful houses, what they say? Taxes, $8,400. And shops? Where it's like that? I thought going to be subdivision? This was the reason. I was working 30 years for this house. I thought going to be nice subdivision. The area going to be, go up. This is what they say, what Gallagher and Henry, the people, explain. Nobody say they're going to bring the, this is what they want to bring. More trucks, go, come closer. They said, "We're not going to hear this truck because it's 500 feet." We hear the trucks from everywhere. At home, the windows are closed. Now, the windows are closed. We have the dust, not at the table. Inside the cabinets, we have at the mouth, at the nose, we are everything, everywhere. So it's not possible. I have my husband at the wheelchair. Nobody's fault. Yes, but it's with the medication what he's taking, it's a little bit, very difficult for me. It's a difficult situation. And we know that Woodward, it's very busy now. Even the police, what is working, what they have to work. I know that. And what is the more the, oh, the warehouses, sorry. There is lot of warehouses. We hear this. And I believe that always something happens because it's lot of police going there. So it's mean good because they watch us. But we have all the time the lights. All the time. Sometimes at the our street, because it's good street, they run. So 2, 3 cars, we have the lights. My husband, he calls me, "Fire is there. Where is the fire?" "No, the lights. It's all right." And all the time it's like that. So we hear everything, we have everything. For taxes, $8,400, for beautiful houses, half a million dollar. How it's possible like that? We now going to face, facing the wall. And the other thing, usually when they put the, some construction, everybody put the big sign with the picture. Few months before, they let the people know what going to be over there. When we receive the note, sorry, something else. The by the Woodward and Frontage Road, this is what I found, usually they leave their people with the second language. Some speaks how IDA, some nothing, some little bit less, more. But usually the Indian, China, Polish, Mexican, some only American. And nobody complains about anything. Because we don't know enough English. Who care for us? Nobody. But we work very hard and we pay everything on time. This is the one thing. The other was, I lost. But it's a very, very difficult situation for us. When they say, this everything, what they say, how much the money going to bring for village, for everything, for the jobs? How we can know this is true? When I been lying and they say, they're going to be another part of the houses? So I feel I, I don't know, but I feel like that. Other people, what I put the notes to the doors today, they told me, they told me they're going to be houses over there. What is there now? It's warehouse, not house. So please, help us. I think the village supposed to help us. We're not supposed to be warehouses over here, where it's thousands, thousands from international to the lock port. How many empties? I think the Woodbridge has lot of space, they can put different place the warehouses, not by the windows. What we going to do now with this? Please concern about this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, Mr. Murphy, members of the Board of Trustees, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dr. Janakiraman. I'm a retired critical care physician. I reside at 2030 Waterford Lane, Woodbridge. The Dignan Homes, which are the first builders, they had the Phase 1 and Phase 2. And in between Phase 1 and Phase 2 was a retention pond. And behind Phase 2 also, behind the prairie, there are retention ponds. And there are a lot of lands available. At that time, I moved in 1990, I'm the first hawker man. I was told that they are going to build another group of townhomes. But Gallagher, Henry, they, for whatever reason, did not build it. And I think the whole place is marked for residential, if I remember right. I don't know how the, how the other transition took place. But my friends here express their concerns. I have got some grave concerns, I'm not going to take much of the time repeating the same thing. The Lowes Theater is there and many children are residing in that area. School buses come and lot of traffic. At least I can talk about the Phase 1 and Phase 2. Most of us are senior citizens. People walk. And I know one of my friend and his wife was knocked down at the junction of Peters and Woodward while they were just standing there. There are nasty accident. Luckily they survived. That was a few years ago. So many accidents takes place like that. And it is, it's a quiet neighborhood. We want to see no accidents, less noise pollution and dust pollution. And my concern is, we, I request the board to consider, somebody alluded to, that's a done deal. I don't want to repeat that. Even, I don't think it is so. I'm sure you all will consider our concerns and try to help the citizens who live in that area, protect them and let us not sell ourselves for the sake of money, the valuable lives. Thank you.
Kim Rosinski, 1221 Westminster, Woodbridge. I guess I, you know, we've talked a lot about the truck, traffic, and I understand you're going to try to push them that way. But I believe the gentleman from Edward Don said 350 people work in that plant. Where are those 350 cars coming? Woodward is already busy. Are they going to cut through Westminster? Are they cutting through Frontage? You know, it just, as a mother of a young son, he likes to go and ride his bike to see the cars. How can I feel safe allowing him to go up Westminster by Woodward to see cars? Because you know, he's a little boy, he loves cars and trucks. If there's going to be increased traffic with the employees' cars? You know, you can't tell all your employees go this way because they're going to go up to the BP, they're going to go up to the Shell, they're going to go up to Costco, and we're going to have more and more traffic. And I guess my other concern is, looking at the map, all the proposed stuff, right like by Westminster and Woodward, they're all these buildings. And it doesn't say what those could be. Can those be manufacturing sites that we're now putting close proximity to small children? When I bought my home, I, you know, I, we had a lot of different choices to go. I liked the fact that the neighborhood was clean, it was safe, there was the nice park, you guys put the other nice park there. I didn't have to worry like about my little boy. And now I just feel like, you know, now we have all this traffic, all the extra noise. And I agree. The noise is hard. There are times when the noise is so loud that my little boy has to come sleep in our master bedroom as well because he can't sleep. And I just think, you know, we have to start thinking about the people who live. Because unfortunately in this time, we all can't pick up and leave Woodbridge and go somewhere else. We can't sell our homes because of what the economy is. And it's just unfortunate that, you know, we feel as citizens in that neighborhood that we're not being heard. And, you know, we voted for you guys to give, for you could be our voice. So please be our voice. Think of the families who live in that neighborhood. The little kids who want to ride their bikes. And we don't need all of this extra noise, all of the construction, all of the extra cars. I understand you're trying to make money, but there has to be something better. There has to be a different alternative. And it scares the heck out of me that we don't know what those other buildings. Because if you look on the map, some are just office, but the ones by Westminster, it's proposed. What are those going to be? Are we going to be back here in 3 to 5 years dealing with another, a manufacturing plant? Because I believe on the PowerPoint, it said light manufacturing. What does that entail? Are there going to be smokestacks? Am I going to look out my driveway and see smokestacks? I mean, that just is very scary thought. So please, we voted for you, please be our voice, please listen to us. Thank you.
Perhaps one didn't hear it earlier, but I believe the figure that Michael Mays used was that the proposed development will have 4,352 reduced trips from what could go in there across the street. So what is currently approved that could go across the street would, in your mind and in my mind, increase the traffic by over 4,000 daily trips, creating an even bigger dilemma for anyone that has children or drivers or residents. Was there another aspect to that question?
Yeah, I think there's, there's a couple of different aspects with respect to the question about smokestacks. The village's ORI zoning regulations limit the types of uses that can go within that development. It would not be smokestacks. There are restrictions within the ORI that have additional landscaping requirements, screening of trucks, there can be no outdoor storage. What you're looking at likely with this proposed development is a combination of office buildings and office warehouse buildings. Now, with the office warehouse, there can be light manufacturing within the building, but nothing that would be exposed to the outside. In addition, there was a question regarding the concept plan. It is just a concept plan. We asked the developers to put that together to give the village an indication of what might this development be. But for them to move forward with any subsequent development, they will need to, like with Edward Don, they will need to submit applications to the village, asking for a zoning lot plan approval, preliminary RPD approval, and final RPD approval for each subsequent building. That requires consideration by the planning commission and a recommendation by the planning commission, and final consideration by the event board. The final question was the perspective of Don and where the employees would come from?
Yes, when we look at our shed maps for all of our employees, where they're at, they're located really throughout the entire metropolitan area. So there isn't a concentration of employees that live, you know, south or north, east or west. So they will use all the access points available to them to come in. They don't, they're not familiar with the area, so my, my direction to them, as we've gone through our employee meetings, we've showed them the main arterial roads for which to follow to get to the site. So we've, we've demonstrated to them the proper access points to the site and it, again, wasn't through the residential neighborhoods, can't control that, but we are going to show them the right way to enter and to get to the facility. So are they going to come, you know, down Frontage Road? Yes, I'm sure some people will come down Frontage Road. Will they come off of Bowton Road and 355? Absolutely. But that's the extent of it. But they are throughout the entire metropolitan area.
Anyone else from the back row?
Good evening. My name is Angelina Davini, 10 South 200 Havens Drive in Downers Grove. I have been a Farmingdale resident since 2009. And one of the most pleasing aspects about our subdivision is the walking path that extends from 87th Street and it also goes over the bridge. It is beautiful, it is quiet, and most of all, it is safe. One thing that I noticed as I walked down this path with my child in the stroller is that there is very limited guardrails as you go down Woodward Avenue. This does pose a safety concern, as you can understand. We can all sit here and say that trucks will be forced to enter and exit through specific roadways. But truth be told, you will always have a handful of employees that don't follow rules. It takes one very large truck to make one very large mistake to injure your citizens that walk along that path. That is concerning to me as a citizen and as a mother. And I ask you to consider that when, when voting this evening. We also had, had some understanding that there might be some type of restaurant manufacturing at this location? Is that, that's what this company does? And will there be any chemicals delivered to this location? Reason being, if there are specific chemicals being delivered to this location and these chemicals pose a hazmat problem, this may require residents to vacate their home for extended periods of time if it poses a potential risk to the residents. That is a concern to me as a resident of Farmingdale Village. We did also speak about the current Edward Don plant, which is located in North Riverside. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that neighborhood. To my knowledge of the area, I'm married to someone who grew up in that neighborhood, it is not located near a residential neighborhood. It is located across from Morton West High School, next to the North Riverside Mall, and across from a gas station. This may be my, my opinion, but it is not aesthetically pleasing to the eye to look at. I hope that you will take this into consideration. Upon purchasing my home in 2009, I purchased my home based upon the ambiance, the four the forested appearances, the calmness to the neighborhood. We are in a poor economic time right now. Our home values are decreasing and I have a feeling this, this is only going to decrease our values further.
Good evening. My name is Kim Zalkis and I live at ninety-one twenty-nine Chatham Court in Woodridge. I'm, I'm gonna keep my comments brief. I am the, the author of the letter that I sent to all of you trustees. So I believe that you understand my opinions on this matter, hopefully pretty clearly from my letter. From those who did not get a copy of my letter, I basically noted five issues that I think are of major concern to this development and has me as a taxpayer and a property owner deeply concerned. Several of these have already been discussed at length by my neighbors, so I'm not gonna go into them at depth. But they include the noise and vibration noise, the noise and the vibrations to the home. We have talked about truck traffic, semi-truck traffic. But I believe, as neighbors have pointed out, there's also going to be incremental residential car traffic as well as smaller truck traffic that isn't going to be contained to the south end of the development. It will be allowed up and down Woodward Avenue and those, those vehicles do make noise. Related to that is the, is the traffic congestion. As somebody who lives off of Westminster Drive, tried to make a left-hand turn off of Westminster Drive today on a, on a Monday morning. It's, it's difficult. And this is only gonna increase the traffic. And if you look at the development and how the ins and outs to the commute, to the Union Point Park are lined up, they're reasonably close to the streets of Westminster, Hillcrest, and Heritage. So it's gonna be difficult for the neighbors to navigate in and out. I think the biggest concern that I have, that I don't, have not seen any data to address, is the property value impact, also brought up by my fellow neighbors. For many of us, our homes are probably our single largest investment that we will have. And as many have noted already, the economic environment today has already dented the values of our homes. I've not seen any data. I have heard the village talk about their experience with other office parks and they believe that there's not an impact to my home value. But I have not seen any factual data that supports that one way or the other. So in lack of given factual data, I'm left to believe my own opinion, which is that living in close proximity to a office warehousing park is going to hurt my property value and make it more difficult if I were to wanna leave Woodridge. Something that wasn't talked about, but it's something that is something that I'm not very happy with in general, is the utilities. I probably lose power minimally ten times a year. Most of the time, there's short blips. You know, your clocks flash so you know you lost your power. A handful of times, it's longer blips. I attended the commission meeting last week and we did ask the question about utilities. And I am not an electrical engineer by any stretch, but what I understood is that this development is gonna be sharing the same utilities as the neighbors today. What that means to me is that my already spotty electrical service that I have today is probably gonna get worse because there's gonna be bigger loads on those lines. Also talked about by the neighbor, my last point, is the aesthetics. We've talked about the signage, we've talked about the berms, the shrubs, things of that nature. I think us as neighbors do appreciate the fact that the developers have tried to go above and beyond what the code requirement is. But from somebody that lives in the neighborhood, who walks the paths, who lives there, it's not enough. And I think we could do better. Just to comment a little bit about the grading that's being done in advance. My profession, I'm an accountant, I work for a corporation. For a company to spend that kind of money on something that's not approved sends a very, very large signal, at least to me, that they feel very, very confident. Confident to the point that they would spend money in this, in this economic time on something. Most companies do not do that. Most companies do not do that, those types of risks. So whether or not this is already a done deal or not, it looks incredibly bad. Whether that's the intention or not, I don't know. My other, my biggest concern in all of this, and I think I've mentioned this to many of you, this has been my first experience in this commercial, in this, in this type of a village process. The planning commission meeting last week was the first that I had attended. This is my first village board meeting. There are subsequent phases to this project, but given what I have seen happen with this first phase, I, I am pretty much convinced that my voice isn't really being heard, that the decision is going to be made. And even though there's phase two and phase three that may come up to planning commission again and may come up to the village board again, we were given one month notice, not provided any data. My questions came from notes that I was able to take in the planning commission meeting and the decision was unanimous, I'm nervous, I'm sorry, unanimously made by the commissions, all looking down, not even making eye contact to the people who voiced concern. So I have great concern that while we are talking today about phase one, that it's going to be a similar process for phase two and phase three. So in, in short, those are my issues. I, I talked probably a little bit longer than I, than I wanted to. Village Board, you have shown with the Tamley and Rizzi issue that you care about this community and that we can do the right thing. I am not opposed to economic development. I'm not even opposed to economic development on this particular parcel of land. But I think the proposal that we're currently looking at, while I know has exceeded many code ordinances, I think we can do better. I think we can still satisfy the village. I think we can still bring economic development. And I think we can address a lot of the issues of the neighbors and satisfy everybody. But I don't believe that the plan that's currently underway is that plan. So I hope that you would consider that. I hope you would consider to maybe even not, not deny this, postpone it and rethink it and perhaps tweak the design to maybe make it better for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Mark Zalkis. I live at ninety-one twenty-nine Chatham Court in Woodridge. I will make another comment on the, the power issue that Ms. Zalkis actually raised. There have been six noted outages thus far with Commonwealth Edison in the Bolingbrook corridor, right? So they have to submit their data to NERC. Right? So if you look up the acronym for NERC, it's the North American Electrical Reliability Corporation, right? So they are a governed, a governed body so that they have to report those findings. So so far, there have been six outages thus far and we're still, still within the year. And through the, the planning commission's meeting, there was going to be a three thousand amp service brought into the Edward Don facility from an existing parallel line, I think, a loop path with Commonwealth Edison. So I'm not exactly sure how that will exactly impact the residents. That's, remains to be seen. However, I will caution Edward Don that they actually ask Commonwealth Edison the reliability of their electrical service as they continue to do business moving forward. So that was my comment there. Secondly, I was curious if an environmental impact study were taken on, on the parcels of land. One being, or were there any, is there any contamination in the groundwater? Was a core sample dug and drilled? From standpoint that the property may have been a farmland at some, at some juncture before my time as a resident of Woodridge. And were there pesticides being used? So now that we're actually doing some development on the land, we're actually stirring up that dust. I'm just kinda curious if there, a core sample has been done, that there has been an environmental impact study done with the ground, the actual soil itself. I think some other residents have touched on some of the tree aspects. I don't know if this is going to impact my floodplain or will just be non-impactful and won't make no resident impact there. And then also too, I'm kinda curious with the trees that were, that are taken down, what the air quality impact is. I understand from, from the village's ordinance that they're making an exception to the number of trees. However, I'm, I'm curious what the, what the air quality impact might be from the truck traffic, from the removal of trees, as well as additional vehicles coming into the full phase one through three plan. So again, just getting on to an environment, environmental impact study should take all these things into consideration. I have a few more here, but I won't touch on those. Third, the truck traffic. I was just curious if we can define a truck in, in that's, in some of the, some of the data that Michael had shown? Is that something that's beyond four axles? I'm, I'm sorry, or something beyond two axles? I don't know exactly what a truck is. A truck could be a FedEx truck, it could be a pickup truck, it could be a step van, it could be a semi tractor trailer. So I'm not sure exactly what, what truck traffic will be put on that collector road and what other truck traffic will be allowed to proceed north onto Woodward Avenue past the Edward Don facility. That was one of my comments there. And then lastly, the four thousand trip reduction, I assume that, I think, Mayor, that you had noted that that was a reduction based on a full occupancy of phase one through three, it being full office space rather than a mix of office and warehouse. I assume that's what it was. Those are my comments. Thank you. Thank you.
Any more information on this, Mayor?
I will defer to Shane with respect to phase one environmental, which specifically done by developers before they do the development. Two of the things that are required by the village with any type of proposed development is seminal of an application with the IDNR. It's determine whether, and that'd be the only department acting resources, determine if there are any threatened or endangered species on this site. And that was done, the IDNR evaluated and said that, no, there was no threatened or endangered species on the site. Another study that is required by the village is a soil study, not in terms of pollution, but quality of the soil, whether they're suitable for development. And that was done through the King Page Soil Study. And the study came back and said that the site was suitable for development.
Phase one environmental has been done in the past by Gallagher and Henry during their ownership. It showed no evidence of contamination. We got an updated phase one or performed, had an updated phase one environmental analysis performed since we formed a joint venture. And it too shows no evidence of, of contamination whatsoever. No phase two is necessary if a phase one shows no evidence of contamination.
Regarding the question as to what do I refer to by the trucks? What I was referring to in the despot levels is semi tractor trailers. And again, with this development, the prohibition of trucks, in this definition, is semi tractor trailers being able to go northbound on Woodward. All other types of trucks, like the Edward Don twenty-four foot trucks, would be allowed to go on Woodward. That's the distinction. As well as any type of UPS trucks or anything else that's currently utilized in Woodward.
Okay, believe that's everyone in the back row. We decide a suitable move to the second from the last row? Okay, one more, please.